Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Acushnet School Committee Meeting of Tuesday, June 1st, 2021. It's 5:30 PM and we're going to get started. Per Governor Baker's orders, suspending certain provisions of the open-meeting law, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via livestream at the link that is embedded in the agenda, and the agenda can be found on both the school district's website as well as the town's website. The school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these procedures as soon as practicable. I do want to note that this is likely our last virtual meeting. Now that the emergency order has ended, we will resume in-person meetings likely in August, which will be our next school committee meeting. Okay, so our first item on today's agenda is...
Mrs. Downing, can I take a roll call?
Oh, yes, sure, certainly.
Mrs. Gomes? Yes. Thank you, Mr. Tevz.
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
And Mr. Howcraft? Howcraft? Not yet, okay. And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our first item on this evening's agenda is the reorganization of the school committee, so that includes the election of officers and then subcommittee assignments. So it is customary that during the first regular school committee meeting following elections that we go through this process. This is per the district's policy, BDA, just for context, if you want to get more information on that. Seems like we just did this recently, but here we go again. So I'm going to start with, please requesting, what I can do is open it up for nominations of chair, vice-chair, and clerk. So if we can begin with, I'd like to request any nominations first for the position of Chair of School Committee.
I'd like to nominate Jennifer Downing for Chair for this 21-22 year.
A second.
Okay. I guess we need a roll call vote on that, Mrs. Benavides.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Tevz?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howcraft, have you joined us yet? No? Okay, and Mrs. Downing?
Yes, I'm happy to continue serving in this role. Thank you for the nomination, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, then for the position of Vice-Chair, if I could please request any nominations. I'd like to nominate Sarah Gomes for this role.
A second.
Was that you, Ron, that second, or John?
Yes.
Ron?
Okay, and we'll take our roll call vote.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Tevz?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howcraft? And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Now, traditionally, the role of clerk is, has been done by the superintendent, supported by Kelly or a person in that, the secretary's role. So I'd like to recommend that we maintain that position and have Dr. Bailey continue to remain in the clerk's role for this next year.
I'll make a motion for that.
A second.
Okay, whenever you're ready.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Tevz?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howcraft? And then Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so then we have the subcommittee assignments. Many of us have, again, have not even been serving in our committees yet for even a year. So after thinking about this, my recommendation is, and for the sake of continuity, to let our newer members continue to settle into their roles, is that we maintain our current committee structure. Obviously, we need to fill the gaps that were filled by Mr. Sumner leaving the board. So that would mean we have two gaps to fill in that. So just going down the line, on the Budget Subcommittee, Sarah Gomes and Craig Sumner were serving in that role. So we would need someone to take that position there. I am comfortable moving into that position, so if the committee is comfortable with that, I'm happy to serve there. Do we have to do each committee at a time, or can we vote on all the committee assignments at once? Mrs. Benavides?
I think you'd have to vote on the ones that you're changing.
Okay, all right, so let me just summarize where I'm going with this. So I would be happy to move into Craig's role on the Budget Subcommittee, and then the second committee, where there would be a change, would be Negotiations. So I was serving with Craig on Negotiations. Did you have a question, John?
I was just curious, if Mr. Hood felt like he might serve well in the Negotiations Committee?
I would love to raise my hand for that committee, frankly. So I appreciate that.
I just feel like your line of work might be instrumental in that position. So I would happily nominate Mr. Hood to fill that position.
And I would happily second. That was actually going to be my recommendation. So thank you for recommending that as well, Mr. Tevz. So that would be my recommendation there. Policy would remain the same members, and that would be Sarah Gomes and Ron serving in that committee as well. Then we have the Old Colony Vocational Appointment Committee. That has three members currently serving, Ron, myself, and John Tevz. So Ron, being that you're now in a new committee, we could lighten your load a little bit and have you step off that. My recommendation was to have Mr. Howcraft maybe serve on, in the Old Colony role there, but he's not here, so I don't know how we want to...
You can still appoint.
We can still appoint. So that would be my recommendation, that we appoint Mr. Howcraft for Old Colony. That way, Ron, you can step away from that role. The SMEC representative would remain Mr. Tevz, and then I would be fine with maintaining my role as the Mass-Joint Conference Delegate. So that is the overview of the assignments I would recommend, and we would need to take a vote as a committee to confirm that.
So I'd like to make a motion to go with Jennifer Downing's recommendations of the changes of the subcommittees. So as stated?
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
All right, one minute.
And can I just clarify one thing?
Sure.
You would be staying on the Old Colony Appointment Committee?
Yes, and Ron would be stepping off.
Okay.
And in his place, we would have, I would appoint John Howcraft.
Yep, okay, thank you.
So I'm going to take a roll call vote. Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Tevz?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howcraft? Keep saying that. Nope, and Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes, payroll, and warrants. We are going to have to take roll call votes on all of these, being that we are virtual, and we have quite a few here. So we'll begin with a, approval of the school committee minutes of April 6th, 2021. If I could request a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve minutes from April 6th.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none?
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Tevz?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howcraft? And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Okay.
May I request a motion, please, of approval of the Executive Session Minutes of April 6th, 2021, not to be released?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none?
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Tevz?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howcraft? And Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Okay, may I request a motion, please, of approval of the school committee minutes of May 4th, 2021?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from May 4th.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Tevz?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howcraft? And Mrs. Downing?
Yes. May I request a motion of approval, please, of the Executive Session Minutes of May 4th, 2021, not to be released?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none?
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Tevz?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howcraft? And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Okay.
If I could request another motion of approval, please, of the School Choice Hearing Minutes?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none?
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Tevz?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howcraft? And Mrs. Downing?
Yes. And finally, a motion of approval, please, for the payroll and warrants?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? We have none?
Yes.
Mr. Tevz?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howcraft? And Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Okay, thank you, everybody. All right, next item on our agenda this evening is delegation. If you are interested in joining the meeting via Zoom to give comments, there is a link embedded in the agenda with a meeting ID and passcode so that you can join the meeting. I don't know if we have anybody in standby, Mrs. Benavides?
Nick, do you see anybody in standby other than the names that I gave you?
Uh, no.
Thank you. We will check back with you later on.
Okay.
Okay, so no one currently? Okay, all right, item five.
Ms. Downing?
Yes.
Is it possible for some, if somebody texts the phone number to Mr. Howcraft with the PIN number, has anybody sent them that?
He doesn't have a cellphone?
Yeah, but I mean, as long as he's got a phone with buttons on it, and it's not a rotary phone, he should be able to dial in from his landline.
I can't text it to him if he doesn't have a phone. An apology.
Oh, I see what, I see what you're saying. Right, right, okay.
You did send the phone number though.
We did call him, though, right? We called him to provide the information. Okay, and we've emailed the information?
Three times.
Okay, all right, thanks. All right, so moving on to item five, which is new business, we'll start with the superintendent's report. Over to you, Dr. Bailey. Oh, and you're on mute.
Okay, I was wondering if we could just take one thing out of order. I'd like to move to the Personnel Report first, because we do have somebody waiting to be introduced, but you'll see on the Personnel Report, if it's okay, I'm going to proceed with that.
Sure.
We have hired two new staff members, and one, since the last meeting, one person has notified the district of retirement. But I did want to introduce to you, and I'm hoping that Nick from Cable can allow Juliana Pacetto to join us. She is the new AES Assistant Principal, which is effective July 1st. So I'd love for you to meet Juliana. She is currently an Assistant Principal in New Bedford, but she is a seasoned administrator, and she has a very strong expertise in math. But I can certainly let Juliana introduce herself to you, and her and the new principal have worked together years ago, so there's already, you know, a connection there. But Juliana, welcome, and you know, you can certainly have the floor at this point in time.
Thank you so much. It's nice to see everyone. How is everybody doing tonight?
Great, welcome, Juliana.
Thank you so much. As Dr. Bailey said, my name is Juliana Pacetto. I'm very excited about coming to Acushnet Elementary School. I've been an administrator for over 10 years. As Dr. Bailey said, I did, used to work with Mrs. Chesney back in Westport, probably about 10 years ago, and I've been in education for over 20 years. My expertise has been math education and math instruction, having been a former middle school math teacher, and I am very excited to be working with Mrs. Chesney and Dr. Bailey and everybody in Acushnet.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, it's great to have you.
Thank you, I'm very, thank you, I'm very excited.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you and welcome. And Julie, feel free, you know, to sign off when you're ready to sign off, because we're just going to continue with the meeting. But one of the things that I will mention to the committee is that, if you remember, Mrs. Chesney has a very strong reading background. She's a former reading specialist, and Julie comes to us with the math background. So I really think this, it's a nice complement of work there, expertise. So welcome again, congratulations, and we're looking forward to working with you, Julie.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so now I'm going to switch back to the order, and if we could go to the Pride Awards, I'm going to ask Mrs. Sylvia, who's joining us tonight. She will be facilitating the presentation. As you know, we have to do this again virtually for the students who are being recognized tonight regarding the Pride Awards. And I know they put together a really nice presentation tonight. So, Mrs. Sylvia, with that, I'm going to have you take it away.
Thank you, so I'm going to share my screen. And so every year, the school committee recognizes one student from each grade level at both the elementary and the middle, who through the selection of their teachers represents the following attributes. P, a positive attitude. R is respectful of peers and staff. I, initiative to do well. D is dependable, and E is enthusiastic.
Mrs. Sylvia, I'm not sure if other people are hearing it, but I'm not on my end. I don't hear the audio.
Yeah, I don't hear any music.
Oh, my gosh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Would you mind starting it from the beginning?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we need to listen about Brielle.
Mm-hmm.
It is with great pleasure that the preschool team of Acushnet Elementary School has chosen Brielle Dean for the 2021 School Committee Pride Award. Brielle comes to school each day, ready and quickly, does everything she needs to do without question. She asks for help when needed and is always looking for new ways to enrich her learning. Brielle has good social relationships with peers and teachers, respectful of social distancing at recess, and having fun with friends. Whenever Brielle is given a task or classroom job, she always jumps at the chance to fulfill it. Brielle constantly participates in class and shows her enthusiasm for learning, as well as other times of day, like movement and music. She has worked extremely hard this year, and therefore, Brielle Dean is most deserving of this award. Thank you.
Natalie is an exemplary kindergarten student and well-deserving of this Pride Award. When I first met Natalie, it was on Zoom during remote learning. She initially presented as a shy and quiet little girl. At first, she was hesitant to participate in dance breaks with the class or answer questions on the Zoom sessions. However, Natalie quickly warmed up. The same went for her first day of in-person learning. Natalie was nervous, as many kindergartners are, to go to school on her first day. Natalie, again, quickly turned herself around and could be seen participating in classroom activities and raising her hand to answer questions. After getting to know Natalie, I realized that she is not that shy little girl that I was first presented with. She is quiet, yet knows when she can be loud. She is reserved, but knows how to be silly. She loves to talk to her friends, but knows when it's time to be serious and get to work. She is rough and tumble and loves to hang with the boys, but also can't wait to show me her beautiful dress, or how her hair looks when she pulls it down out of a ponytail. Natalie exhibits all of the qualities of a Pride Award winner. She exhibits a positive attitude in class in so many ways. Natalie tries hard and puts effort in, all that she does. I never have to ask her to fix her writing or coloring, because it is always completed perfectly. She is constantly raising her hand to answer questions in class and is never afraid to share her ideas or opinions. Natalie is respectful of peers and staff. She gets along well with every student in class. I know that I can pair her up with any partner, and she will be kind, well-mannered, patient, and friendly towards them. Natalie has initiative to do well. Natalie always uses her extra time to further her learning. When Natalie finishes her classwork early, she can be seen reading book after book on her classroom shelf, or working hard to get to the next level on Lexia on her Chromebook. In fact, one day, Natalie unfortunately fell at recess and got a really bad scrape all over the side of her face. After getting it cleaned up at the nurse, I told Natalie that if she was not feeling up to certain tasks at school because of her injury, that she could rest or take a break. Natalie, however, persevered and wanted to do everything the class was doing despite her injury. Natalie is dependable. I can always count on her to help out a friend in need, or remind me of important information that I ask the class not to let me forget. Natalie is enthusiastic. She loves to learn, and this exuberates from her personality. She displays a sense of pride when she has mastered a new skill, and she gets excited when we are learning something new. Natalie is well-deserving of this award and everything it stands for. I know she will do great things in life. Congratulations, Natalie, on being the Kindergarten Pride Award winner. You should be very proud of yourself. I know I am.
It is with great pleasure that I present the First Grade Pride Award to Scott Bardo tonight. When this little boy walked into my classroom on the first day of school, I immediately knew that there was something extraordinary about him. The COVID-19 pandemic brought greater challenges than anyone could ever have imagined. Imagine going back to your first-grade self and having to attend school virtually. Imagine not swinging on the monkey bars at recess, or sitting side by side with your very best friend at lunch. Determined to be better, to do better, Scott never allowed these challenges to get in his way. "You can do hard things," I always tell the kids, and that's just what Scott did. Positive attitude. What if we lived in a world where everyone had a positive attitude like Scott? What if everyone smiled as bright as he does, even on the darkest days? I guarantee that we live in a much better place. Even when presented with challenges, Scott's positive attitude remains strong. His smile is infectious, and he makes the days for the people around him better. Respectful of peers and staff. It is evident that Scott comes from a loving, caring, and respectful family. Not a day goes by that I don't get a friendly good morning from Scott as he enters the classroom. When we were in remote learning, Scott would always greet me with a smile and a "good morning, Mrs. Powers." I asked his classmates to tell me how they would describe him. His friends had some really nice things to say. Scott is very kind to everyone. He plays with me all the time at recess. He listens to the teacher, and he's cool. He's a good friend. Scott is sweet and caring. He makes good decisions and choices. Scott is so loved by his peers. After being out of school for a week, Scott was welcomed back with a standing ovation from his classmates. Initiative to do well. I didn't think it was possible, but I've actually witnessed him grow into a better version of himself. Scott always goes above and beyond the grade-level expectations, always working hard and trying his best. Dependable. I can always count on Scott to make the right decisions and be the leader of the class. His classmates consistently look up to him and want to follow his leads. His peers are drawn to his positive energy. Enthusiastic. Scott is enthusiastic about learning. He's enthusiastic about sports and enthusiastic about life. He possesses these amazing special powers, powers to fight to be better, to motivate and inspire others, to be the change that this world needs. As you can see, Scott is a sweet, lovable, hard-working student who is admired by his peers. I know that you will do amazing things in this world. Congratulations, Scott. I couldn't be more proud to be your teacher.
I am so proud and honored to have the opportunity to speak about our second-grade Pride Award recipient, Parker LeBree. There are a few students who display the same enthusiasm, drive, positive attitude, and motivation as Parker. He comes to school each day, ready to work, and give 100%. When faced with arduous or demanding tasks, Parker digs his heels in, and he does the hard work necessary to persevere until he gets it right, no matter how many tries it may take. Even during the challenging days of remote learning, I could always count on Parker to show up every day, on time, and ready to learn. Schoolwork isn't the only time that Parker gives it his all. If there is a theme day or special event, you can be sure that Parker will show up in the most detailed of costumes and accessories. Here he is on Career Day, in his full-fledged scientist motif. Of course, he was sure to put his goggles on when it was time for a science lesson. Even more important than his strong work ethic, though, is his uncanny ability to be a friend to everyone. When students are given the opportunity to choose partners or small groups to work in, I know that I can count on Parker to make sure that all of his peers are included. He doesn't hesitate to work with someone new, and will take the initiative to seek out one of his more reserved classmates to be his partner. Parker is the epitome of laid-back. You can't help but admire his go-with-the-flow attitude. He is not easily rattled, and he doesn't sweat the small stuff. He will not allow trivial matters to stop him from having a great day. We could all do well to take a page from Parker's book. Parker, it was such an honor to be your teacher this year. I cannot wait to see what great things you will surely accomplish. I will be watching and rooting for you every step of the way.
This year's Pride Award winner from Grade III is Emerson Hood. Emerson comes to school every day with a positive attitude. She is ready to learn and eager to do so. Emerson is eager to share what she knows with her classmates and is always willing to take chances, even when she may be unsure of herself. Emerson's love of school and learning spreads throughout the classroom and makes it a more positive place for her peers. Emerson is respectful of both her peers and teachers. She is kind-hearted and will do anything for her friends and other classmates. When someone is upset, she never hesitates to comfort them. At recess, Emerson always tries to include others so no one feels left out. Emerson is always respectful of all of her teachers and never hesitates to do what is asked of her. Emerson has an initiative to do well. She always completes her classwork to the best of her ability. Without being told to do so, Emerson always corrects any mistakes and resubmits her work. She always does her assignments at home on Wednesdays, and when there is something she may not understand or need clarification on, she will email me. Emerson is the only student in my class that has consistently turned in a weekly reading log, which shows her desire to go above and beyond. Emerson is one of the most dependable Emerson is one of the most dependable students I have known. She is always looking for ways to help throughout the day. Emerson offers to work with those that might not have a partner without even being asked because she wants everyone to be included. If we missed Wednesday enrichment group work, Emerson would complete what we would have done on her own or with a friend. I can ask Emerson to help out in any way and she will gladly do so. Emerson is such an enthusiastic learner with a true love for school and learning. She challenges herself on a daily basis in all academic areas. Emerson takes pride in her work and in her achievements. I've been so lucky to have had Emerson in my class this year. She is everything a pride award winner should be. I wish her all the best next year in fourth grade. Congratulations Emerson on your pride award.
Hi, I'm Ms. Arano.
And I'm Mrs. Delaria.
And we're here to present the fourth grade pride award to Shane Morris. It has been our honor and privilege to have Shane in our classroom this year. Through such a challenging and difficult year, Shane really shined with his work ethic and outgoing personality. There was no doubt in our minds that he is very deserving of this pride award.
The P stands for positive attitude, which Shane possesses each and every day with everything he does. He is constantly persevering through tough challenges and always with a smile on his face. The R stands for respectfulness. He has shown respect to his classmates by offering help daily and never excluding anyone. He has shown respect for staff by always being polite and being on his best behavior.
The I stands for initiative. Shane's initiative is what sets him apart from his peers. The D stands for dependable. Whenever a task is given to Shane, you will never doubt if it will get done or not. And finally, the E stands for enthusiastic, which Shane most certainly is. He always makes the best out of any situation.
All of the letters put together spell pride, which Shane puts into his daily work, his relationships, and himself. Shane has worked very hard this year and has challenged himself both academically and personally. He is an outstanding individual and we cannot wait to see what the future holds for him.
It is with great pleasure that we award Shane with the fourth grade pride award.
...that Kevin Layton is the recipient of this year's pride award. Throughout this challenging and unique year, Kevin has exemplified all of the attributes of the pride award. Kevin's calm and positive demeanor was displayed in all of his classes. Kevin not only was respectful of students and staff, the staff and students respected Kevin's opinions and decisions made throughout the year. Kevin never wavered on his desire to succeed in class, no matter what learning environment he found himself in. I could always count on Kevin to assist me with technology issues as we navigated this new way of learning. His suggestions for keyboard shortcuts and audio issues were particularly helpful. Kevin has been a steady source of joy this year. It has been a pleasure to have him in my class and he will definitely be missed. ...that Kevin Layton is the recipient.
It is with pleasure that the sixth grade team awards Reese Bone the 2020-2021 Ford Middle School Pride Award. As a team, we have truly been rewarded with this young lady who embodies every aspect of the pride award. Reese exemplifies many attributes such as being trustworthy, a conscientious worker. She is focused and always dependable. Reese constantly strives for academic achievement. She is compassionate toward other students and she always handles her success with humility. Reese's positive attitude allows her to be a role model to the others and her respect for teachers and her peers is unwavering. Her quiet disposition, courteous manner, positive attitude make it a pleasure to have her in class. Reese is a wonderful individual who amply represents all the attributes of this award. A positive attitude, respectful, initiative to do well, dependable, enthusiastic. Congratulations Reese, on behalf of the grade six team. You absolutely deserve this. It is with pleasure that the sixth grade.
Good evening.
This year's seventh grade pride award recipient, Delaney Andrade, has been able to demonstrate the characteristics that the pride award represents through remote, hybrid, and in-person learning during this school year. Delaney has really embodied everything this crazy year has been about. After she joined us from tech a partway through the year, it was easy to forget that she had not been with us the whole year because she got right to work and quickly became one of the most engaged and hardest-working students in seventh grade. Delaney would be on time for the Google meets and say hello, actively participate in the lesson, and follow through to the end. She also seems to genuinely enjoy school and even pushes her classmates to do better when they are slacking. Delaney is respectful towards her teachers and peers and in return is well-respected by all. This respect goes beyond classroom academics. She shows respect by following the health protocols and technology guidelines while in the classroom. Delaney's positive attitude radiates in the classroom through her ability to give her best, share her best, and push herself past her own expectations. She is thoughtful and even gave out valentines to classmates and teachers. Thank you, Delaney, for being a positive representation of a cushion at students. Sincerely, the seventh grade team.
Good evening. This year was a year like no other. From Zoom to Google Meet to hybrid to remote to hybrid to in-person learning. Each pivot we made challenged both teachers and students to step outside of their comfort zone to ensure an uninterrupted learning experience for all. We considered this as an eighth grade team when we met to discuss our pride award recipient. Collectively, we agreed that Caitlin Ramos overcame all of those pivots with grace, dedication, and positivity. Without a doubt, Caitlin Ramos exemplifies the qualities of a pride award recipient. Caitlin always wears a smile from the moment she walks through the entrance to Ford Middle School. In each of her classes, she always finds the best in people and situations, even when that may be hard to do. She is also thoughtful. Before leaving for Christmas break, Caitlin was kind enough to hand out homemade Christmas cards to her teachers. My copy included a rendition of "We Wish You a Merry Christmas." Only in her version, the word merry was replaced with meowie, based on her love of cats. It immediately brought a smile to my face and sometimes I still take a peek at it and get another smile. One of the most endearing characteristics of a great scholar is when they show respect, and that is Caitlin. From classroom discussions to math breaks to time in the cafeteria, Caitlin makes it a point to treat people with respect. As a result, she has earned the respect of her classmates and teachers. I can say with absolute confidence that Caitlin has also put her best foot forward in every assignment this year. Whether that assignment was easy or difficult, Caitlin never shied away from it. Instead, she persevered until she understood the content and was able to demonstrate her learning. As this comes to a close, I would be remiss if I did not take this opportunity to express how proud the eighth grade team is of Caitlin. While she will forever be a Wildcat, we will miss the positivity that she brings to each of our classrooms. As Maya Angelou says, "If you are always trying to be normal, you'll never know how amazing you can be." We all know Caitlin Ramos is a truly amazing young woman who is bound to change this world. Caitlin, on behalf of the eighth grade team, congratulations on receiving this year's pride award. Best of Blackin High School and never forget that you are always a Ford Middle School Wildcat.
I thank you all. Thank you for letting me share this with you. It makes me smile each slide. I just smile brighter and brighter and brighter at those smiling faces and those kind words. I thank you all. I thank you to the staff who contributed to that and to the parents who send their kids to us every day.
Thank you, Mrs. Sylvia. And I'm just, I love these awards so much. They put a smile on my face, too. And I'd love for all of us to just take ourselves off mute for a second so we can all collectively give these amazing students a round of applause on behalf of the school committee. Thank you, because to be selected one student each grade is just so impressive. And I know the pride awards is something that the school committee started many years ago. So I just, you know, congratulations again on behalf of the district and the school committee. We're really proud. It's just such an inspiration to see everyone doing such a great job and especially in such a challenging, challenging year. So I don't know if any other members want to say anything. Yes, Mrs. Gons.
Just congratulations to all the recipients. And I just had a question. Do they have a memento that they get to keep to knowing that they won the pride award?
Yeah, so they get a plaque. Yeah, it says their name and the year. Yep.
And I know the principals have a special time because this is a virtual ceremony or presentation that they'll be presenting that in school with the students.
Good, good.
But I too love these awards and, you know, I'm sure it's difficult for the staff, for the educators to pick one because we're so fortunate to have the students we have. Our Wildcats are truly incredible and I too would just like to say how proud I am of the recipients tonight. Congratulations. Does anybody else want to say anything before we move on?
I just asked, is that Mr. Howcroft that joined us with the phone number?
I believe it was, but he is muted.
Yeah, I'm looking at the number that is him, Mrs. Benavides.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm gonna note that I noticed Mr. Howcroft on at 6:15.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, John, if you can hear us.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Okay.
Welcome.
Rolling.
All right, great. We just finished with the pride awards and we're gonna move on to our next agenda item, which is retirement recognition. Dr. Bailey.
Yep, so I'm gonna actually ask Mrs. Sylvia to come back on. Both principals actually will have Mr. Johnson come on, too, but they will be talking about the staff members who will be leaving us this year for retirement. So we want to wish them a happy and healthy retirement, but I'm gonna turn it over now to Mrs. Sylvia.
Do we want to let?
We can let Mr. Johnson in and also Rose Monte and John Roy and Lisa Roy. So good to see you all.
Oh, we're missing John. Lisa, is John there?
He's not, he wasn't in the waiting room. No one's left in the waiting room.
Oh, here he is.
There he is.
I'm working on my rockets.
So I thank you all, Rose, Lisa, John, fifty-nine years combined. Fifty-nine years, thirteen, Rose, Lisa, twenty-one, John, twenty-five. But I hear, John, you're not done. John has been applying for all of our positions this year. He keeps sending me emails that he's applying for all these positions next year.
Yeah, I'm taking the superintendent job in Fall River.
Oh, Mr. Roy.
Always make him laugh, Mr. Roy.
Yes, he does. So I was like, should I do this alphabetical order? It would be John, Lisa, Rose. So if I do the reverse order, it's Rose, Lisa, then John. Rose, I have to thank you, thirteen years, and this by far probably was one of our toughest years, Rose. You could handle the crying, the meltdowns, the little paper cuts, the indigestion that they thought would never go away in their stomach, and you held it all with grace this year. You really did. There were times when I just said, Rose, I can't, I don't know. I don't know these COVID protocols right now, Rose. Please help me. Can they return to school? Rose, when did they quarantine? Rose, is this a close contact? And Rose was there right by my side the entire year. And not only by my side, but at Scott School, at the elementary school also. You served at both schools this year with a smile. And in past years, too, you would cover at the elementary school and you're like, I'm heading over, I have my radio, I have my keys, call me if you need me. And so I thank you for that and I thank you for trusting me to help you out sometimes. I'm cleaning out the cup for you or taking out the ice pack and wrapping it with a paper towel, giving the bucket when you are not there, if the child is outside your office waiting. And so I thank you, Rose, for your dedicated thirteen years at Ford Middle School and you truly will be missed. I don't know how we will fill your shoes here at the front office.
Thank you, but I think you will. It will be, you will find somebody, Tracy's coming over. But thank you, Michelle. Thank you for the teamwork that we have up there. I love it. The people I work with, I can't say enough about it. I truly love my job.
But when you retire, you're gonna relax. You may entertain, be indulged, travel, read, enjoy those grandkids. I couldn't have fit a C in there for crafting, but you'll craft also, Rose, and yourself. So I thank you for everything. We still have a few days left, a few weeks left for some more Band-Aids and some more ice packs, some more injuries out of the field. Thank you, Rose. And Lisa, I thank you, twenty-one years with a cool, calm, collective calm. I thank you. Somebody could be yelling, a child could be yelling in our faces so upset that their seat in lunch got moved, so upset that they forgot their pencil at home, but you took it all in stride. So calm, so collective, and I just have no other words sometimes to say. Oh, thank you. Thank you for being down the hall. Thank you for being ready to go help me with a student. And I look to you for advice, for suggestions, for anything going forward. I don't know how, I don't know how we will replace that at the Ford Middle School. I really don't. You're an amazing teacher. It'll be hard to replace you, impossible to forget. And I think you're leaving with our eighth graders this year and they have made such gains and we've seen such growth from the fifth grade. I would love to see it continue, but I know that you will also relax, be indulged, and travel, and read, and be entertained. Be entertained. Thank you, Lisa.
Michelle, thank you so much. You know, it has really been a pleasure working there in both schools through the years. So many changes we've seen beyond measure. You know, I remember when I started, nobody but the secretaries had computers and now everybody has a computer. So, you know, we had the old buildings when we started. There's been so much change and really it's been a true pleasure. You know, we've raised our children in the district. We were able to watch them grow. We've been able to be together the whole time. So we feel truly blessed and we're very pleased to move on to the next part of the journey, but really have such fond memories of a cushion at.
Thank you, Lisa and Rose. And John, you never will retire. The work that you've done with your students will live on in their minds forever. You will never retire. I don't even know, I can't even, I've said the man, the myth, the legend before, unfortunately too many times this year, but you are the man, the legend, Mr. Roy. Where is Mr. Roy? Oh, I hear Mr. Roy. Yep, he's coming down the hallway. Yep, I hear Mr. Roy. Mr. Roy is sending a child to my office for Aaron. I'm like, I didn't call you. Yes, Mr. Roy said I needed you to go get tissues. Mr. Roy said there's no school tomorrow. No, there's school tomorrow. Mr. Roy says it's early release tomorrow. No, it's not early release tomorrow. But twenty-five years, John, at Ford, and I know you had many years before that in public education.
Yeah, you came to the school, I think, too.
What is it, John?
Well, when I started, you were at Durfy as a student.
You started in ninety, yeah, you started at Ford in ninety-five and I graduated Durfy in ninety-three, yes.
Yeah, I started Durfy in eighty-seven. That's when you were hanging out with Chris Hemm.
John, you will come back. You will be our guest speaker for our, you know, whatever we need, John. There is nothing I can say right now that says what you have been for Ford Middle School, that constant, constant person for Ford Middle School, your logic, your sense, your, even though you joke and you are an entertainer, you are very rooted in family and faith and making great decisions for us, for the school. And I think- for us, for the school. And I thank you for that over the years. Oh, you're on mute now, John. I can't hear you.
Oh, that was my wife.
There he goes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
I found the teacher by, totally by accident. I had come back from living out west, and my mom was working at the high school. She said, do you want to sub in the winter? So between pounding nails, I said, sure. And I just loved working with kids. And honestly, this year has been, as hard as it's been, it's also been my most satisfying, because I feel like I'm leaving at the top of my game with kids. I just love working with kids. And that's the thing, I'm, I'm really going to miss a lot. But I feel like I'm going out on a high note, and I'd rather do that than feel like I'm on fumes. So better to leave and want for more than wait for you to leave the door. So thank you. And honestly, to start with you, to end with you, and knowing that when I first started at Durfy, you and I have that connection, and I just think that's a great way to wrap it up.
Yes, yes, it is a small world.
Yeah, especially coming off of Acushnet. I'll be honest with you, coming from Fall River to Acushnet, that was a huge leap, because the kids at Fall River are one style. And I come out to Acushnet, and right away, they're like, you talk funny. And I'm like, no, you talk funny. So, you know, they tell you, say talk, or say coffee, or stuff like that all the time. So I used to do it because they liked it. But while, you know why? You become part of the community and the fabric, and you realize that I see kids that are cops in town, or working here, and now we have kids of kids. And it's just amazing to see how life just progresses and it keeps going on and on.
Yes, I thank you. It's due to, to the three of you and your dedicated years of service to us in the Acushnet Public Schools. So I thank all of you. And Scott does have one retiree.
I just, before you go, Mr. Johnson, I just want to say that, you know, to the three of you, it's been a pleasure having you in the district. And something that Mr. Roy just alluded to is that for, for three of you being in your last year, you know, right before retirement, you didn't, you finished just as strong as when you started. We certainly had an unprecedented year, where you had to learn new technology. Nurse Rose was meeting with DPH all the time regarding the guidelines. Like, there were so many things that you had to do, and you really stepped up. And this is your last year, so I can't thank you enough, and you will be missed. But just know that we're always looking for substitutes. So feel free to let us know if you're interested in subbing at any point, because you're always welcome.
And I just want to say, you know, to Rose and Lisa and John, thank you so much for your dedication. And, you know, one thing that's so special about the Acushnet Public Schools, I think families and their kids feel like they're part of a really safe, small community. And your presence in the district is, is why. It's, it's educators like you that make that feeling happen, that make, like my son, go to school and feel like he's going to another part of, another family. So, so thank you so much for your service.
Calvin invited me to go golfing with him sometime.
I'm sure he did. Yeah, I'm sure he did.
I'm sure, thank you.
Yeah, he will, he'll, he'll take you up on that.
So thank you again. And now, Mr. Johnson, I know that your retiree, soon to be retiree, Jean Carroll, could not be with us tonight, but I know that we still want to recognize her here at the committee meeting. And again, we'll be recognizing our retirees later on within our school population. But go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
And just while I have the chance, I'd like to congratulate Lisa, John, and Rose also. Lisa and Rose, you both, you know, I worked with both of you very closely over the last three years, and I very much appreciate the time and, and the opportunities that I got to work with you. And John, I'll never forget our numerous, numerous hallway chats that we've had over the years. So it's been a great pleasure getting to know you over the time as well, so. But I do have, Jean Carroll is retiring, our third grade teacher at Acushnet Elementary School. And I have some words and thoughts for her. Unfortunately, she can't be with us tonight. But she started at Acushnet Elementary School as a special education para. She received her teaching certification in 2005, and has been an Acushnet Elementary School teacher ever since. So that's 23 years of service. And I do like to do a little bit of math in these situations. So that comes out to 4,140 days of school that Jean was with our students. Now, if Jean had an average classroom size of about 20 students over those 23 years, then she would have had an impact on over 460 students. And that's a large number of lives that have passed through her life as an educator, in which she somehow piques the interest in all their lives. And I'm sure that many of them, many of her students now, have gone on to become doctors, and educators, and lawyers, and politicians, and mailmans, and the list would go on and on and on. So here are a few things about Jean that you may not know. She loves teaching the Revolutionary War. The end-of-the-day read-alouds are one of her favorite times of day, especially when it's time to read The Tale of Desborough. She loves reading the grandfather Tang stories with her students, which is a book of tangrams that the students are then able to work on as well. And our team had a few thoughts as well. They wanted to make sure that we all knew that she was very organized. She's been a team leader for many, many years. She loved organizing the grade-level field trips, and she always kept the team on track at meetings. And on a personal note, Jean, I have very much enjoyed our informal hallway chats in the mornings and in the afternoons, as I walk by going to or coming from my duties. Best of luck to you, Jean, on your retirement. May you enjoy the next 4,140 days, reminiscing and relaxing about your career as a teacher, and then many lives that you have touched. Congratulations.
So I too would like to congratulate Jean, and I know that we will all have another opportunity to do so. But again, unfortunately, she was not able to make it tonight. Does anybody have anything else before we move on?
I'd just say thank you as well for all of your years of service and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all so much for joining us tonight.
Thank you all. Good night.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
Thank you. Okay, and the last thing on my report tonight is other matters that may have not been anticipated at the time of the agenda posting. We do anticipate some surplus coming our way to declare. And when we were looking for the surplus policy, for whatever reason, when we updated the policy, we couldn't find it. So I did call MASC. Jim Hardy said, yep, you're right, it's not there. So I decided tonight to stick in Policy DN, which is School Properties Disposal Procedure. I'm not going to read it through, but this will be considered our first reading tonight. It's pretty general. It's the MASC policy. And then we can certainly have a more detailed discussion when we meet in August. But I at least wanted to get it out there to let people know that it was not part of our approved policy book. So we do need to vote on this eventually, not tonight. Does anybody have any questions?
Would this be consistent with the town's policy on surplus?
I, I don't know what the town's policy is.
I know they have a procedure, but I really don't know, you know, specifically.
Right.
I just want to be just consistent, that's all.
Right, so I did put it in your packet tonight, and we can certainly look it over. And if you are interested in looking at the towns to compare it with the towns procedure, you can certainly get that information, and then we can come back in August. This will be on the agenda for the second meeting and the vote.
Bailey, is this, is this consistent with policy from other districts? You did get it from MASC, so I assume, okay.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Paula, do you think that the subcommittee should meet on this, or, I mean, I did read it. It seemed pretty standard.
Pretty standard.
Okay.
Obviously, if you want to meet, we can certainly meet. But I thought, where I know we've got some surplus coming up, and I wanted to get the first reading out there in case anybody did have any concerns. And if people certainly have concerns or questions, perhaps they could contact me, and we could set up a policy subcommittee meeting. But if you're fine with moving forward on this, because it is pretty standard, we can certainly vote on this in August, or have the second reading.
Ron, what do you think?
You know, maybe we can, why don't we exchange emails today or something? And then if we feel like we need to meet, we can meet. I read it. I didn't think it was. But if we feel like we need to get together, I'm happy to do.
Fair enough.
And just so you know, I just got my hands on this today. So got it from Jim Hardy. And when we discovered that it wasn't a part of our book, we need to make it a part of our book. So tonight is the first reading. And that concludes my report for tonight. Thank you all so much.
Great, thank you, Dr. Bailey. Okay, turning it over to you, Mrs. Flynn, for our business manager's report.
Hey, thank you. Well, I'm going to be brief tonight. Due to the length of our meeting, I've been asked to be brief, because we had a lot of good stuff on the agenda. So with that, I first want to congratulate all the Pride Award winners, and thank their teachers for the presentations that they made for us, and especially their parents, because these students don't get to be, don't get to be where they're at without their families. So congratulations to all of our Pride Award winners' parents, especially Mr. Hood and Mrs. Bardo, our PTO president. They're the, they're the parents that I personally know, but congratulations to all. And also, the next piece of great information I'd like to share is that five of the top 10 Fairhaven High School students went through Acushnet schools. I noticed an article in The Standard Times recently, and as I was looking at the names, I recognized them. So I just went through, and from our tuition invoices, I noticed that the valedictorian, Sean Brown, is a Ford Middle School graduate. The salutatorian, Chase Pennett. The number three student, Sophia Bernato. The number seven student, Allison Damash. And the number nine student, Paige Blackburn. Also an Acushnet resident was Kate Furlan, but I don't know that she came through Ford Middle School. She may have gone to St. Francis. But congratulations to all those students. That's really, you know, quite remarkable for Acushnet to have five students in the top 10 at Fairhaven High School. So good work to the students, good work to their families, and good work to their teachers here at Ford Middle School. So I just wanted to start with that.
That's fantastic. Thank you for sharing that, Mrs. Flynn.
You're welcome. You're welcome. The next item is the SMEC Annual Lease Renewal. So every year, SMEC asks the school committee to review and approve the lease agreement. SMEC leases one classroom and a small, a small-sized office, similar to my office and Kelly's on the other side of the building. So they are going to be leasing those rooms again for next year for the total of $12,565. So we just ask that the school committee take a vote to approve that. And if approved, we will just need a school committee signature on the lease. So I will leave that in the items to sign.
Make them approve the lease of SMEC for 2021, 2022 school year.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. We'll take our vote.
I'll do the roll call. And Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Tebs?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howcroft?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. The next item on the agenda is the budget update. Now, I know you all have the typical reports in your agendas. So certainly, if you have any questions, you can ask them at this time. But I'll just go through a few of the top points for the record, and then we can move on. So as you can see, the overall surplus right now is about $634,000. Some changes to that is I added in some surpluses that we are likely to have in legal professional development and student activities. Now that we're at the end of the fiscal year, we can more confidently predict that those accounts will be in surplus. There was some additional expenditures that balanced off the surplus. And to that, I also added a section of approved anticipated year end purchases. So you can see that on the report. Also, for the grants, you can see what the balance is, what the amount awarded in our grants was, how much we've expended year-to-date, and what the balance in those grants are. So we have fully expended four grants, and we have about five grants left to spend. Some of these grants do carry over, so it's not like June 30th is the hard stop date. Okay? I also updated the COVID-19 expenditures and funding. So to date, we've spent about $809,000 on COVID-19-related expenditures. And the bulk of those are funded through the ESSAR grant, the CBRF grant, the Town Cares, and some school nutrition grants. And we've just started to dip into the local budget for any of the last purchases that we've had to make. Going forward to FY '22, I did receive information of the total amount for ESSAR III. If you recall, we received ESSAR I from Department of Ed this year. That was about $66,000. ESSAR II, we will be applying for in over the next month. That grant is for 300, just under $305,000. And those funds are available through September 30th, 2023. The Department of Ed recently confirmed the amount for ESSAR III. So for Acushnet, that's 600, just under $688,000. And we can spend those through 9/30/2024. So there'll be a separate application for that. So the total of ESSAR II and III that we've yet to apply for is $992,671. Add that together with ESSAR I, and it's about 1 million, just under 1,600,000 for the three ESSAR grants to Acushnet alone. Okay?
And I, can I interrupt you for a second? So those ESSAR grants are, we, I know we're going to have a budget subcommittee meeting on this, but can any of that use, be used for the curriculums that we're purchasing?
It would depend. But I'll defer to Dr. Bailey for that. I know she's been working with Ms. Regary on the grant. So it really depends what the grant is applied for, what the, what we're.
We don't know yet.
Don't know yet, no.
Okay. And then also, my other question, the $634,000 that you said that we had surplus, that's a little deceiving, right? Because isn't there about like $300,000-plus dollars that are already earmarked to be spent, or?
Correct. That's why I said that surplus, and then on the bottom of that report, those approved purchases that we are, that we started to purchase, correct.
So just clarify for the record that, you know, the $600,000 is being spent on many other items until July 1st, just for the record.
Okay. The other, the last thing I have, I believe, is the facilities, just some upcoming projects. They're the same. You can see those in the report. We're going to start work on the evaporators and condensers at Ford Middle School, the gymnasium partition. We've issued purchase orders for the security camera upgrade, and see if there are some of the projects that Sarah was just talking about. We've issued purchase orders for the security camera upgrade, access control and intercom work upgrade. Access control is the badges that allow staff to come into the building. The intercom is here for our central office. Update the phone system. We have a purchase order out for that. Update the copier fleet. We have a purchase order out for that. The backboards and rims are in. We just need to find some time to put those up outside. We have outdoor classroom Wi-Fi going. We hope to get the safety inspection for the big toy done before the year end. And if there's any anticipate, if there's any suggested repairs, we'll, we'll try to get to those before June 30th. But if not, we can get to them over the summer. The little toy additions are starting to wrap up. And we also will be doing, working with Old Colony to build the shed. I did get a quote, Mr. Willett had a quote for the materials. And it looks like the materials to build the shed are going to cost about $13,000. So we have to pay for those. Old Colony is doing the work, but we are paying for the materials. And the DPW is also going to be laying the foundation. So there may be some materials costs associated with that as well. Finally, we also have the roof on the elementary school. I was just advised from the architects that the documents are ready, just about ready for bid. So we, I did the advertising today. So we have a bid opening for the elementary school roof on July 8th, 2021. Now, the architects and the OPM, the owner's project manager, you know, we get those assigned from the MSBA. They believe that it's feasible to complete this work over the summer. You know, but that remains to be seen, because I know that in other school districts with other roof projects, they are running into supply chain delays. So that could impact our ability. So I will be continuing to keep you all updated on that. So I think that is it for me. I know I had put a placeholder for a budget transfer, if we had any that require a vote. And I do not have any of those tonight. So, but I certainly. And I do not have any of those tonight. So, but I certainly will at the next meeting to, to balance the budget and close out the fiscal year. So that's all I have. If anyone has any questions, I'll certainly take those now.
Thank you, Mrs. Flynn. Any questions, members?
I don't, I don't have a question, but I would like to just publicly thank Mrs. Flynn for all of the work that she has done over the course of this very difficult year as well in terms of keeping us straight and honest here from a, from a budget perspective and business perspective. So thank you for that.
No, thank you. And, you know, I, like I said at the last meeting, I couldn't do this without the help of a lot of people. You know, I rely heavily on Mr. Oliver, Mr. Willett, and Mrs. Sheridan for technology, facilities, and school nutrition. So that's the operations part of it. So they really make my job a lot easier and then intern their staffs as well. So it's, it's, we have a, we have a great crew in, in, in finance and operations over here. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. If there's no other questions, we're going to move to the next item on the agenda, which is school committee member reports. And we're covering the superintendent's evaluation. So if you recall, each member recently evaluated Dr. Bailey. And the process for that was each individual school committee member independently completed the evaluation and submitted their ratings to Dr. Bailey along with comments. So what we're going to do this evening is I'm just going to very briefly, and then everybody's individual ratings were then aggregated into an average, and that is the rating that is given for each, each category within her performance review. So I'm just going to briefly go through each standard, say what the cumulative average rating was for the committee. There were also comments that were, written comments that were provided by each school committee member. So I'll just try to go through and do a brief summary of some of those comments without naming any names so that comments remain anonymous. And so I'll do that right now. So this is superintendent, superintendent Dr. Bailey's summative evaluation report. Progress towards her goals. So for student, her student learning goal, the rating there was met. And a few comments that came through. In this incredible tough year, Dr. Bailey did a great job of providing teachers the support, encouragement, and PD needed to provide quality teaching and learning experiences for our students in a hybrid model. Our district, unlike many other districts locally, provided students a comprehensive learning platform and synchronous instruction even in a virtual environment. In general, this was a tough year to make progress in this area. I am giving a rating of some progress because I think we are moving in a direction that will ultimately lead to better results. I believe the district did a great job with the circumstances and the decisions that were made by our government leaders. The uninterrupted learning and rigorous curriculum, I believe, was attempted with the highest level of effort and creativity, but likely fell short due to the fact that most students were remote learning for most of the week. The professional practice goal rating was met. Overall, I felt this goal was met on all standards. I appreciated Dr. Bailey's commitment and leadership. Dr. Bailey's collaboration with other districts was helpful in helping the community make decisions on policy. District improvement goal number, rating three, met. Excuse me. District improvement goal number four, met. Navigating the impact of the pandemic was complex, and there was never enough, never going to be a single course of action that pleased everyone. However, Dr. Bailey did a good job engaging all of the stakeholders and working to find compromise. Ultimately, I think she achieved the goal of providing a safe and healthy learning environment that prioritized every member of the school, school community. In the same section, this was a year that deserved a lot of input from the community. As the leader of the school district, there was no way to make everyone happy with the reopening plan. I do commend Dr. Bailey for doing what she felt was in the best interest of the district and all of the stakeholders. Unfortunately, not everything was positive about how this year went. I think some of the negatives deserved more attention at times in order to correct them. With that said, the mask policy created difficulty in procedures with lunch and mask breaks. In fact, I would argue that it made it less safe and reduced time on learning. We could have had more surveys that had better and more detailed questions. I appreciate the communication with the ATA president. I believe, in addition, though, we should be giving more attention to discussion and direct feedback from staff to get their feedback on daily routines and what could be, what we could be doing to make things safe, to implement the curriculum more efficiently, and to improve policy and procedures. Assess and performance standards, standard one, instructional leadership, proficient. Dr. Bailey's instructional leadership and extensive experience in teaching was quite clear over the last year with our hybrid model. She worked very hard to ensure teachers provided students a synchronous virtual learning experience. She kept expectations high, but also worked hard to position teachers for success by creating ample time for PD. Her approach was always thoughtful and begins with what is best for the students. Standard two, management and operations, proficient. Dr. Bailey is a fair manager who understands the importance of accountability and transparency. I think she does an outstanding job managing the many facets of our district. Management and operations, I believe, could have gone better. In a year like this, I feel like delegation may not have been enough. I believe there are some challenges that keep us from some level of consistency with leadership in the district. Standard three, family and community engagement exemplary. I felt Dr. Bailey went above and beyond in trying to include the family and the community in the direction of the district, district throughout this very challenging year. I think everyone felt like their concerns were heard, and they knew they could weigh in and take part in what our schools looked like in the opening year, in opening, upon this opening, this, this year, upon opening this year. Standard four, professional culture, proficient. Dr. Bailey came into the district with a very challenged culture. She has worked incredibly hard since her tenure began to improve our culture. And over the last year in particular, I have really seen a big difference. Culture change takes time. It is a slow journey that involves building trust, creating an environment of transparency and accountability, listening, collaboration, and being able to strike a reasonable balance across all the stakeholders in the district. She is making great progress here, and I commend her for all of her hard work. The overall summative performance rating for Dr. Bailey this year is exemplary. This was a difficult year. While there can be improvement in some areas, Dr. Bailey didn't outs, didn't, is an outstanding leader for our district, and we are fortunate to have her. So that is my summary. And members, all of this information in detail is available to you for reference as well if you want to look at these after the meeting. Any questions or comments? Yes, Mrs. Gomes?
Thank you, Paula, for this year. I know it's been trying, and, you know, you've worked above and beyond. I don't even know how many hours a week. I don't even want to count them. But thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
I would second that, Dr. Bailey. Thank you for your outstanding leadership. This was such a tough year and for everybody in the district. And I think you did an outstanding job leading, leading everyone and keeping everyone going and persevering. It was incredibly difficult, so.
Thank you. So I just, I want to say that, you know, by law, I have the lovely, fortunate privilege of having a public evaluation. So that's always got to be a fun thing, right? But it's a humbling experience, and I just want to thank you all. But I will say that we have a great team in Cushinget. So, you know, those proficient and exemplary ratings reflect the Cushinget team because we truly, we truly, two schools, one district, we work together in the best interest of our students and our staff. And yes, it has been a challenging year, unprecedented like no other. But I truly believe that we led in so many different ways in terms of what we did during the pandemic, and we had the full cooperation of our educators, our staff, everybody, custodians. The work that people put in this year was like no other year. So I commend everyone and thank everyone for their efforts. And it's truly a pleasure and an honor to be serving in this role as the leader of a Cushinget. So thank you all so much.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, can I add one thing? Because being a new school committee member, so to speak, that, you know, would have been inappropriate for me to, you know, to join in with this evaluation at this time. But what, in my initial discussions with Dr. Bailey, I'm, I'm deeply impressed, and I'm looking forward to an exciting tenure, at least in this coming year as far as putting some, some, some real efficient programs in, in place.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Howcroft. All right, there's no further comment. Oh.
One question. So I know our next meeting is going to be in August. And Paul, I don't know if you know this yet, but do we need maybe a second meeting somewhere in between that to just go over like what the expectations are for next year? I'm just, I just, you know, want to make sure that we have enough time to discuss expectations and things like that for the school opening. I don't know if, you know, opinions. Does anybody else feel the same way?
Yeah, I think I do as well. I, I kind of feel like a lot has changed even since our last meeting. You know, I think DSC has, has already changed some of the guidance for reopening. And, and they said, stay tuned, more to come. I think they're going to make some more decisions, certainly within the next probably six weeks or so. And, and my gut tells me that I'd prefer to not wait until August. I'd prefer to probably have, as Ms. Gomes said, probably another meeting, even if it's-
Even if it's a quick one?
Yeah.
We do have a workshop scheduled, I believe, for June 16th, which is just about two weeks away.
Do you think maybe we could reschedule that? Because we're not going to have all the information from DSC by June 16th, but maybe do something in July?
Push that one out. Maybe cancel that meeting and push it out to July.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of that.
So do you want to push out a workshop meeting or a regular school committee meeting?
So I think what we're talking about here is postponing the June 16th workshop to a date in July.
Yeah, workshop's fine.
I'm just trying to check. I'm seeing if we have any workshops scheduled for July. We might not have scheduled in July because typically we don't have meetings in July. So we would push that out to July. There would be no regular school committee meeting in July. So there just would be that one, one meeting together as committee. I, I think that's a great idea. Maybe we'll have-
Might be, might be best to try to just line up the date sooner rather than later, just given summer-
Yeah.
Summer vacations and so forth.
I'm looking at July 20th or the 6th because I have my executive institute that I'm away for the week of the 12th, so that week is out. So if we're sticking with a Tuesday, I'd be looking at July 6th, July 20th, July 27th.
What about July 20th?
I think that, that works. I think the week of the 6th might just be difficult, given that-
Holiday.
The holiday.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll send you an email as a reminder. We will make it Tuesday, July 20th at 5:30 workshop.
Looks good. Okay, so June 16th, we will pick out of our calendars.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. All right. So moving on to the next item is communication and information. There are a number of letters that have gone out to families that are noted there on the agenda for your reference. We do have executive session this evening, and we will be returning to our meeting, our public meeting, to close out officially. So for executive session, we have to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares. So if I may, I'd like to adjourn, have a motion to adjourn this meeting so that we can move into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. You're on mute, Kelly.
Mrs. Gomes? Yes. Mr. Tebs?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howcroft?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Can we begin by opening the meeting?
We need a roll call.
Okay, motion to open public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, who did the second? John? Sarah Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Tebs?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howcroft? You might be on mute.
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome back, everyone. So we have a number of votes that we need to take this evening before closing out the, the meeting. Hopefully, I have these all, and you'll remind me if I don't. So the first one is with regard to some positions. So I would like a motion, I'd like to request a motion, please, to approve the creation of a new position as well as a salary adjustment for the Student Services Data Specialist position.
Second.
Any discussion? Nope, okay.
Mrs. Gomes? Yes. Mr. Tebs?
Obstein.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howcroft?
Yes.
And Downing?
Yes, thank you. Okay, the second position is a motion to approve the, actually, a change in job description for the data analyst position.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, no discussion. Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Tebs?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howcroft?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes. The next motion I would be looking for is to approve a change in the existing computer teacher's title to Technology Integration Specialist.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, and there's any discussion? No, okay.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Tebs?
Obstein.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howcroft?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Okay, the next vote that we're taking is with regard to transportation, our ongoing transportation contract negotiation discussions. So I'd like to request a motion, please, to increase last year's offer for the contract for fiscal year 20's contract from an offer of 30%, increasing it to 47%.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll second that.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Tebs?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howcroft?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Okay, another vote with regard to transportation contract negotiations. I'd like to request a motion, please, to approve a sliding scale fee for fiscal year '21 with percentages of, in this manner. with percentages of, in this manner, closed school at zero percent, fully remote at forty seven percent, Wednesdays at sixty four percent and fully open at a hundred percent.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? No, okay.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Tebs?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Haukraft?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Okay, our final vote this evening is with regard to Superintendent Dr. Bailey's annual performance recognition pay, her PRP. I'd like to request a motion please to approve Dr. Bailey's pay for the twenty twenty, the twenty to twenty, two thousand twenty, twenty one school year in the amount of three thousand dollars per contract.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Tebs?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Haukraft?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
And I believe that concludes all the votes that we needed to take this evening. Did I get everything, guys?
Thank everyone. I know it was a long meeting and we had a lot of things on the agenda tonight in executive session, but thank you all so much for the time tonight.
You're welcome. Thank you. And our next public school committee meeting will be in person. It will be in August and that date will be announced, right, Dr. Bailey, to be announced?
Yes, we will be having a workshop in July that we already talked about a date. I wrote it down. But I will send out a confirmation email to the group. And we will post it. It's a public meeting. We will post it.
Okay. Mrs. Gomes?
Sorry, I just wanted to, we've been thanking everybody for their great year. But we haven't thanked Kelly Benavides yet as our, as our school committee secretary and as, you know, the administrative assistant to our superintendent. Thank you, Kelly, for a fantastic year. And any other staff member or anybody else that we forgot to mention over the course of the past couple of meetings, you know, thank you for your services.
Thank you, Sarah. I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I echo that. You keep us on track every month. So much appreciated, Kelly.
I try. Now, no, I just need a motion for adjourn.
Second.
All right. And final roll call of the evening. Mrs. Gomes? Yes. Mr. Tebs?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
And Mr. Haukraft?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Eight forty-nine.
All right, thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
You too.